There we are.
We'll take you off of here.
Are you ready?
I'm ready, but she didn't signal me yet. Oh, Derek just came on. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education's special virtual meeting of November 25th. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please turn off your electronic devices so we don't have interference on the feed. And we'll have the roll call, please.
Certainly, Mr. Shea.
President.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Molnar.
Here.
And Mr. Zawiski.
Here.
Okay, item number four, we need a motion to adopt the agenda as written with the addition of the addendum concerning school funding. Yeah, I have a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski.
No.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, item number five, I need a motion to approve a correction in the adjustment of the 2021 school fees, which was changing varsity football to $75. Now I have a motion, please.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Jane, can you give us a little detail about this?
Yeah, when I went to my spreadsheet, I saw that we'd put three tenths down rather than five tenths. There were five varsity meetings or football games, three home games. And unfortunately, when I looked at the numbers, I'm like, wait, only $45 for varsity and 83, 30, 35 for JV. It didn't seem quite right. So that's what happened. It was just a, that's why.
Did we miss the two playoff games? Is that what it was?
No, they were the two away games. We had three home games, two away games. And for some reason I had had the three, I, you know, at one point we were talking about only having two. I don't know, we were just all discussing. So it was pure wrong number in there. So sorry about that.
And band and cheerleaders didn't travel though, so they don't need to be adjusted?
Exactly. Nothing else changed. Yeah, that was just a, air.
All right, thanks.
Okay, roll call.
Uh, Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Item five, power for schools agreement. We need a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of master electric energy sales agreement between the district and power for schools, endorse electric supplier. Now I have a motion, please. Don't move.
Second.
Discussion.
Just if we can have Dean give us some, just so we're on the record, what this is and why we're asking you to vote on it.
Yes. We've been doing this for just over a decade now. It, John Gillan did this before me. It's through the Ohio School Council. It's a consortium that purchases or makes agreement with the electrical providers. And it just locks in the generation portion, not the demand or the transmission portion. But it definitely is it as savings for districts who participate. So it's a renewal.
At a lower cost is what I understand this time.
Yes, slightly lower than our, what we're in currently.
Thank you. Further discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. So before going into the discussion of future instructional plan, let's take care of the addendum, which is a resolution to endorse the fair school funding plan. In this case, it will help us out a bit with our funding. And it puts us on a place where we'll know what we're getting from the state. Am I right, Jane?
Yes, this is what I discussed at the last board meeting. It's a, I don't know. It's, I almost think it's our last chance here. I don't know, but it's a, it's a good plan.
So it's a resolution in support of that. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Okay, so that passes in, we will move on to the discussion of our instructional plan. The Lucas County Board of Health today put out some new mandates for us to look at, to abide by, and then to look at for ourselves. Mr. Gregory, would you like to take that now?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I want to appreciate the board meeting the night before Thanksgiving on this topic. Everybody's in their homes and family are starting to come around. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That's out there watching tonight. There's a lot of interested people about, you know, what are our next steps going to be? The Health Department has been kicking around for weeks now, putting some kind of mandate or order out in Lucas County. As far as I know, it's the only county in the state of Ohio that has done so. So that was voted on by the Board of Health this morning. And basically what it says, and, and, and it affects all schools in Lucas County, whether they're public schools or parochial schools, private or charter. So it does affect all schools in Lucas County. And basically what it says is beginning December 4th through January 11th, they would like all schools to be virtual during that, or they're ordering all schools to be virtual during that timeframe with a few exceptions. One of the exceptions is schools are allowed to, to have their K six students come in some fashion or form, in person, special needs students in some form or fashion. And students are allowed to come in and, and take tests like state tests, which are mandated or exams, if that's what districts are doing. So there's a few caveats that allow kids to come to school, which is, which is a good thing. And then in addition to that, they have suspended sports beginning the same dates, December 4th through January 11th, at least in Lucas County, practices and contests. So all of us that are in Lucas County are going to be, you know, shutting down our sports and extracurriculars for at least that timeframe. So, so that leads us into what we were going to discuss, you know, before we even knew about the order was what, what is going to be our next steps moving forward? And, and as anyone knows watching, and certainly all of you know that this year's been a, been an up and down, you know, decision-making year that we've had to think through and, and put decisions in place. And we don't always agree, and that's, that's very similar to what's going on in America right now. And there's a lot of opinions that are floating around out there. And so tonight's just another one of those times where we're going to make a decision on, on what to do next. I, I have recommendations that I've shared with you, and I'll be happy to share those here in a minute. But the idea is we were going to come back next Monday in a hybrid fashion with seven through 12, you know, coming back in hybrid two days a week, and then K through six coming back four days a week. So that was the plan. So obviously this is altering the plan in my mind. So I don't know if, if the board would like to just open for discussion now. If you'd like me to throw out my recommendation and, and you guys react to that, we can go either way. Carol, what do you think?
I think put out your recommendation first, and then we can react to it. I think it's probably the easier way.
Okay. And so I've talked with obviously a lot of you today, and I've talked with administrators today, and I've talked with other members within our school community today. And, and, you know, a lot of text with what's going on in, in the community and those types of things. And, and been very difficult to try to land on what to do. I think it's fairly simple to decide what to do seven through 12. So my recommendation is seven through 12 is that we, you know, we remain virtual starting on Monday, since we are already ordered to be virtual starting the following week. To me, it doesn't make any sense to do that. So the big discussion or the big struggle for me today was what to do with students in grades K through six. And I will tell you, I've been back and forth since 11 o'clock when this order was put in place. In my mind, what's the best thing to do? Because it really is, I had somebody tell me today, it's really a huge tug of war between what's right for public health versus what's right for education, right? I mean, it's, it's just this huge tug of war. But with that being said, I've landed on the idea that I think it's best that we go K through 12 virtual beginning on Monday. That's my recommendation. Basically, for these reasons, we, it is hard to say there's any big difference in terms of community spread for, for those who work in K through six buildings or those who work in seven through 12 buildings. There's really not a big difference in terms of the community spread or the opportunity to catch the virus. We do know that with little kids, it's not transmitted as, as much, but we're hearing more and more about the idea that they're asymptomatic. I also believe that if we're going to truly try to support the spirit of this health order, that we need to truly support the spirit of this health order, which is, you know, all our kids and all our staff need to be teaching remote. Because I really believe in the coming weeks anyways, that what we're going to see at the elementary or K through six level is going to continue to be unsustainable and it continue to be hard to manage in terms of the quarantining. I'm still seeing it every day as we go through this holiday break and over the SAT, seven days. Now, our numbers have dropped in terms of the quarantine, just nature, because we haven't been in school. But I continue to see, I would say, more staff than ever become positive. If you follow our sheet, we've had 60 positive cases, both students and staff combined. That's a pretty high number in my mind. It's still only a couple of percent, but it's creeping up. But with our staff, it's closer to 5% right now in the positive range and continues to grow. So I just feel like that's the best way to be consistent across the district, to be fair to all our families, to know what's going on. Because we may have to make a change due to all these other reasons in just a couple of weeks. And it's just, it's too much. We need to know what we're doing and then go with it. So with that being said, oh, and then related to, you know, athletics, I mean, I don't think there's much of a choice. My recommendation is that we follow the order. We will continue to have practices and contests through the fourth, which is next Friday at four o'clock. That's when they cut it off, four o'clock next Friday. So that would allow us probably, I think we had five or six contests, a couple of swimming, a couple of basketball, a couple of junior high games. So it at least give our kids some level of competition before it shut down. So, and we're following the order. So with that, I'll open it up. I, I don't know, anyone would like to start their thoughts?
I can provide a.
Yeah, go ahead, Keith. A lot of research today, and I appreciate it. I mean, he's, he's trying to see all angles of this, and there's a lot to look at.
And I, I did reach out and I talked to, to the Lucas County Board, and there, there are some things I don't believe that they took into consideration when making the decision. But as I, as I read over the order and did some research today and talked to our, our district attorney to find out some, some things centered around this, this order, I, I do believe that we have other options outside of just blanket following the order. So that being said, when you, when you look at the order itself, the protocols that are put into place for us to maintain a safe space for our kids during this pandemic, I think as a district, we all, we all know that Sherri Suxton, our district nurses, our school nurses, the staff, even the students, everybody has done a wonderful job. They've gone above and beyond, and we've kind of become the gold standard throughout Lucas County, not just in the protection standpoint, but from in the recording standpoint. So we are not reckless in our determinations and what we've done. We've done a wonderful job with this. But the protocols that they've put into place are unsustainable from a all-in aspect. And what I mean by that is that if you have one positive case, when we have all of our students in session, that one positive case takes out a whole classroom and the teacher. When we're in our hybrid model, if you have one positive case, that one positive case takes out that one positive case. So that's sustainable. If you go back two weeks, we had 450 kids that were in isolation that were healthy. So you, you look at our data, this is where I have a hard time supporting the orders. When you look at our data, we don't have a, an outbreak or a positive case problem. We have an isolation of healthy kids and healthy teacher problem. I know you said the teacher spiked up. We have closer to five, six percent. What do we have, 300, 320 some employees or?
Here, here's the numbers. We have 472 employees, 22.
So there's 22 current positive.
Percent, yep, positive.
So a little under 5%. And we have, you know, 38 students and we serve about what, 3,500?
Uh, well, yes, but 3,200 in our schools because there's a 250 in our OCS digital.
So we're, we're under 1% there.
Yep, right at one, 1.18.
So from a positivity standpoint, but you look at our quarantine numbers, again, the isolation issue. So I find it funny that the county put out an order giving us the flexibility to make decisions centered around K through six and, and choosing how we want to go back, whether it's, you know, remote, hybrid, all-in, et cetera, when the protocol that we follow because of them isn't sustainable for us to go all in. It's just not feasible to go four days because by Christmas time with the increase in community spread, we would see 50 to 60% of our district out in isolation by Christmas. So it would force our hand to take a step back to go back to hybrid and go back to remote. So those are some of the inconsistencies that I see with the order. But when I said I wanted to propose an alternative aspect that we necessarily don't have to follow the order. So you other, other board members are aware. House Bill 606, the immunity bill that was passed a few months ago, relieves all districts and private companies, et cetera, from tort liability centered around COVID-19. Essentially, the Lucas County Board of Health does not have the legal authority to mandate this order. And I want to read the actual verbiage from the bill so you guys understand it. But so House Bill 66, the Ohio legislator made clear that it's aware of the unprecedented uncertainty surrounding COVID-19, as well as the numerous lawsuits our, across the country alleging tort liability related to COVID-19. It also points out that business owners have not historically been required to keep members of the public from being exposed to airborne viruses, bacteria, and germs. The Ohio legislator reiterated that HB 606, that orders and recommendations from the Ohio Executive Branch, counties, and local municipalities, boards of health, and other agencies do not create any new legal duties for purposes of tort liability. Such orders and recommendations are presumed to be irrelevant, irrelevant to the, of the existence of a duty or to a breach of duty and are visible at trial to establish proof of duty or breach of duty and tort actions. So essentially that releases our district of any liability surrounding if we wanted to move forward with our original plan of going back hybrid on Monday and continuing with the protective aspect of athletics that I think we have done a great job up, up to this point as well in protecting our kids from an athletic standpoint. We've gone above and beyond any other district. So there is an alternative option out there. And it's, it's written clearly in HB 606.
Keith, it sounds like you're, you're concerned about liability and not the people that are involved in this. I'm not.
I'm absolutely concerned about saving.
Worried about a lawsuit. I'm not as worried about a lawsuit as I, I am our employees and our students. And that's what the tort liability is about. It's about whether we're going to get sued. I don't care if we get sued. Okay, I care about a teacher dying, a bus driver dying, or a student dying.
And show me the data that supports that we have had that issue, Mike, based on the protocols that we have been following.
If you look at the data through the state of Ohio, the increase in events, including death, ICU.
Deaths are not up.
All of those, every day I get a, a form from the state of Ohio, Ohio Fire Chiefs Association. And it's not all Lucas County, it's the whole state of Ohio. We're in the hundreds of deaths yesterday. Okay, in the state of Ohio. We do not know where our students have, are going to be going during this vacation at Thanksgiving and what they're going to be bringing back with them when they come into the classrooms. I think we have to be a little cautious right now. I, I mean, I'm, I'm all for it. I understand how devastating it is for these kids not being in classroom. Sports, I'm sorry, I was a coach for a long time. Sports are secondary to me. The education is the key thing we have to be concerned about. In my, and of course, this is my opinion, as, as we all have those. I'm not worried about lawsuits. I'm worried about bodies, and I don't want to see deaths. It, it, it possibly can happen. We don't have a virus yet. We don't have a vaccine for the virus yet.
Okay, but please don't, please don't, please don't mistake my statements for me having no care centered around the, the reality of this virus, Mike. Again, show me the data. Our deaths are not up in Lucas County. Our hospitalizations are up. Our positivity rate is up, but deaths are not currently up in Lucas County. Yes, we are, you know.
But we are in an area that is, we're going to have a lot of transmission in this, in this next area where people are going out on vacations. They're doing things during this time span when they're going to be off.
And show me the data where that bring, brings us back to athletics and schools from a contract tracing standpoint where we have been the point of contact for mass outbreaks. If I had that data, then I would very easily make this decision and not propose an alternative solution. I would very easily say, okay, this, we're at a 17, 20% outbreak ratio of positivity cases. Our kids are absolutely at risk by us sending them to school. We have to go fully remote. There is no data to support that, to force my hand to make that decision. It's the only reason I propose this. So please don't take my, my thoughts as not caring for people's lives. That, that has nothing to do with my mindset.
I was, I was referring to what you were using as the data. Everything was in tort liability that you read to us as far as the House bill.
Right, what I'm saying, there's no legal ramifications. I was letting you guys know, there's no legal ramifications for us to not abide by the order. And, and I think it'll be interesting to see what the other school districts, parochial especially, throughout the county do with this.
I do know that St. Fr, I just saw St. Francis on the news tonight, and they're, at least as of now, they're going to comply. And I know St. John's was sent out a letter that they plan to go remote as well. I'm not sure though about the others. I think Stritch might be out already. I'm not, I'm not sure. But, so Keith, I appreciate that. I mean, Keith, Keith's right. I mean, you know, there, there, there will be legal challenges to this order, I think, immediately from somewhere. Right now, we're the only county in, in Ohio that I'm aware of, like I said. But with all that being said, I personally am not recommended to be the district that, that defies the order at this point in time. There's too many unknowns about what is or isn't legal, right? Everybody, there would never be a case if, if everybody was right with how they perceive the law. So, you know, whether, whether, you know, you're right, Keith, or whether you're, you know, that interpretation is right, or our attorney is right, or someone else is right. Who knows? But I think it's a bigger question, and, and you and I have talked all day. So, so I totally understand that getting kids in school has been my priority. I was going to do everything possible to have kids come to school this week. Almost to a point where I was getting, you know, a lot of pushbacks, like what the heck are you thinking, Hal? Like what, what, all these other districts are starting to go down, but you keep pushing that we're coming back. And, and I really felt we could get there, but this order, there, it doesn't make any common sense to me with this order in place that, that we can possibly bring kids back and, and until the order's up. I know it's not easy for families. There's a lot of implications, a lot of ramifications. So anybody else would like to share their thoughts on my recommendation?
I've shared a couple of concerns with you with the remote learning. And I may bounce around here, but feel free to jump in and kind of address them as I go through. You know, at one point originally, we talked about a six, seven hours in front of a screen is not healthy for a child. And we had a good remote learning process in place. When we went back this last time, unbeknownst to the board, our remote learning plan changed. And the kids are in, you know, in front of the screen, I think from eight to 2:30 every day. You know, and that poses a couple of problems. Again, we're kind of going against what we said before about the screen time. I know kids don't have, there's no breaks built in during the day for the kids, not even a lunch break on some days. They, they're in front of that computer, eight to 2:30, non-stop. And that poses a couple of other challenges that, you know, when we're in school, the kids can, the, the teacher can instruct, and the kids don't have time to do some of the workload in class and not have to save it for home. You know, and currently I, I think the teachers are using the complete Zoom time. And there's like five, 10 minutes in between Zoom, so there's no time for any schoolwork to be done during the day. And it all builds up to be done after the school time. You know, so going remote at all levels. I think we need to readdress our remote plan, look at the workload we're giving, and adjust it to make sure kids have several breaks during the day and ensure they get a lunch break every single day also. You know, and a couple of the other issues with, that I've seen and had some concerns raised to me from some community is, you know, what is the purpose of remote learning right now? We give all these assignments, a lot of it's busy work, a lot of it's assignments. And they have a day or two, whatever the timeframe is, and if they don't turn it in, the system's locked down where they can't turn it in. So are we just out there giving assignment and teaching kids to follow rules? And if you don't turn it in time, too late, or are we actually trying to make them learn? You know, I, I think we need to be more flexible with some of the scheduling and the assignments and due dates and how they're turned in under these circumstances. And just make it a little bit easier for the kids and also the families that aren't there during the day with their kids to allow flexibility and more time to get these assignments, if we're saying this is the proper workload, to get it turned in.
Yeah, I, fair enough. You know, we haven't, personally, I haven't had very much feedback. I've had probably more positive feedback on some of the changes than I have negative over the course of the last seven days. But with that being said, I, I had planned to Monday reconnect with Jennifer Conkle, our, our, you know, curriculum director or principals, and try to do some kind of evaluation. And now, you know, if, if, if we go this route, this recommendation, then what we could even do is try to get a sense of, of what is working, what isn't working, maybe through a survey or something, or some feedback mechanism. Because we do want to continue to improve all the time. Now lunch, I don't know about lunch breaks. You're going to have to help me out with lunch breaks. I don't know what that means. If, if what you mean is that there's just the kids on a Zoom from eight to 2:30, and there's just never any time, is that what you're saying? Like, there's just.
My, my daughter's up in the room from eight o'clock until 2:30, sitting in front of the screen. And if I'm home, I'm able to get something and take it up to her, and she has to wait for that right time when they're not required to be on screen to try and get something to eat. Because again, the teachers are using the Italian Zoom time, right, wrong, indifferent. They're using time given tool.
Right, sure.
Much time in between each Zoom class to come down and grab something to eat and get back and not be eating on screen, which, which you're not allowed to do.
Fair enough. Heather, you're, you're shaking your head, so you're seeing a little bit of that as well?
Yeah, and there's been times where a lunch period has had to be used for him to zoom in, to be able to talk to the teacher about something else. For, again, I agree with you on the timeframe for assignments and the workload. I mean, it is a lot. And when you don't have time during the day, like you said, it all piles up at night, and they're up way late. And they're exhausted again the next morning, and they don't have time to walk away from that screen in order to be able to, like you said, even if it's 15 minutes in between classes to just go grab something quickly. Luckily for Q, he has study halls in between, but if you don't have that, you aren't required to be there for that whole Zoom time. And then he would miss a lunch, that is correct, if he has to deal with the teacher for an assignment that he needs to discuss. So I agree with that. The, the time in between, there's not a lot of time, free time for them. It's all on screen and you have to be there. And to be able to walk away to have some free time in between. And, and let them have time to work on things during the day would be great. So that their nights are not just piled, staying up till midnight every night, working on assignments.
And as Jeff said, kind of look at what the focus is, is around the education of the busy work aspect, right? Because a lot of this stuff can be done during the Zoom time to where they're on screen, going through the modules together and actually learning it, you know. In front of the screen with their class. So they're not up till seven, eight o'clock. And extending those deadlines on some of the two day aspects. And I've seen some of those issues of, you know, assignments being closed out. You know, there may be some extenuating circumstances where parents are working all day and they can't help. And, you know, those two days may go by and then it's an email, I gotta reopen it. And so absolutely, there's some. Reconnection with the staff on, on the focus around what our remote learning aspect is, is centered around the leniency aspect, the workload, et cetera. Would, would be very beneficial, I think, for the parents of the kids.
And like I said, I think this time around, the one thing that hasn't improved, I think, is the teacher interaction and teacher accessibility. I haven't heard those issues this time around. So that's improved. But kind of back to what Heather and Keith were saying, you know, my son's an A student. He gets most of the work done in school when they're in school and spends maybe an hour a night doing it. Now with the current workload being on screen for the entire day, he's up till, you know, nine, 10 o'clock doing schoolwork. And, and on weekends trying to do it and catch up from what he's been behind on. And this is a, a child that is pretty self-contained, self-controlled, knows what he needs to do and does it when he can. But there's just no time to do that during the day.
So I'm hearing workload and scheduling are really the two. We, we've ramped those up obviously. In, in response to how it went the last time. So I'm sure that's been heard loud and clear by our team who's, who's watching tonight. And I'll make sure I, I get back on, on, on that and see what adjustments we can make. Cause obviously we need this to be successful for our kids. And their families, which is you guys.
I understand, you know, I appreciate this time around where they've taken attendance, where we know that the kid is there and engaged. And that works. But at some point when that instructor knows that that child, that student is present. And then can listen or whatever, at some point that, that student has checked in. And knows what's expected, knows the assignment. At some point, can't we at least, okay, acknowledge, yes, they've shown up for that class. Now can you give them time to work on whatever instruction that you were planning sometime during that period? Once they've checked in, at least you know they're there. And I appreciate that this time around, because we didn't have a whole lot of accountability the first time around. But if we know that student's there and we know that student is trying, and like they said, you know. Students that have performed well in the past are not doing well this time around because the workload this time seems so much greater. And you're right, the weekends have, it's piled on because they don't have that timeframe spaced out to work on that during the day.
Hal, concerning the K through six, you know, we, we've all maintained that the, that age group. Needs to be in school some form, fashion, whether it's hybrid or four days a week or five days a week. Have you had any time to have any discussion with any other superintendent on, are they going to try and do a hybrid or some form for that grade level? Due to the importance of that hands-on for them?
All of the ones that I'm aware of and are all remote, top to bottom, with the exception of like special needs. I believe, I, I, I had just a couple of text strings today. We didn't get to that specifics at all. But I'm just looking at, like Washington local, they were planning on being remote, I think, through all of the next two weeks or week, week. Fully remote K-12. So all, the districts that, that, so Anthony Wayne, Sylvania, Springfield, TPS. Are all remote through the whole break. And now probably my guess, and I don't know this for sure, probably through the mandate, uh, order mandate.
Now, what is the eleventh, January 11th on our calendar? Is that?
That is a Monday. So technically the order would end on the eighth because it's eight AM on the 11th, which is like a Monday morning. So really we could start back some way on the eighth outside of the.
Our third quarter begin earlier than that? Or is that when we?
One week earlier on a Tuesday, yeah. Yeah. Is that what you mean? Yeah, we start the weekend, students, the Tuesday before that. So let's start back on.
Like the fifth.
Whatever the date is.
Okay. And have you had any, did it ever come up with your discussions with the county health department, with you or any of the other superintendents that? Kind of up to what Keith was saying, what if we don't follow this order? Did anyone ask that question and what the county would do?
Well, it was, it was, it was kind of like what we said was whatever you do, don't give another recommendation because it, no one will follow it. So if you're going to do something, make it a mandate. So because that's, that's the way we, we, I mean, I, I personally feel we need to follow the health department's mandates. I get, there's going to be a group out there that wants to take on the, the man and take on the health department. And I understand why. But at this point in time, I'm not willing to take that risk because if something goes horrifically wrong within our district, I don't want to be the superintendent that gets the mic shoved in their face going. Do you know, I mean, you know, I haven't been thinking this way for a long time, but you know what? If a teacher dies or if a staff member dies or somebody and we, and, and it's an elementary or a K through six person. Now I'm starting to think that way. Cause I'm seeing a whole heck of a lot more people closer to me that are sick. And in the hospital and it's scary.
I was just curious because you know, this order now captures the private parochial where they've kind of been doing their own thing, exempt from state. I just wondered if any of those people get on those phone calls from those, say, private schools or charter school and have asked that.
They have a separate call than ours. So I don't know what the private schools say. And I don't believe many of the charters, you know, were involved in, in too many of the calls. They may have been, maybe on the, the parochial side. I fully expect all the public schools to comply.
So given the feedback that, you know, that we gave you, kind of, you know, me, Keith and Heather, the one, you know, with kids in the school, gave you some of the feedback. I guess what, because last time the change was made, this last time, I don't think any of us knew there was a change. I was, I felt a little blindsided hearing things from the public and my kids that the schedules changed and I was not aware of that. So I guess what's your plan to address some of these and get some feedback back to us as to? The path that you think we're going to go as far as the remote learning?
I have a couple of things. I got a couple of things I want to say. Number one, I looked at a facet schedule. They do give breaks between classes and they do have a lunch break on their schedule. I don't know if it's followed, but they have that. Looking at numbers. If you put five, six back in, our I number is fifteen facets, only six. So I.
Talking about positive cases, right?
Cases. You know, you have more than twice as many in five, six as you have in seven, eight. So I think we have to keep that in our mind. And if anybody reads the blade, if you read David Briggs today on athletics, he's the Blade Sports columnist. He reckoned, his thing is, he thinks we need a three-week hiatus from sports. Across the board.
The problem is, is we're, we're taking the most controlled population, which is the school systems and the way that we've handled ourselves. With athletics and with education from a protective standpoint, and we're shutting that controlled environment down. And they have no power over any other industry, right? So where the issues are really coming from in your, in, in the public sector. Is so less controlled and so less protected, but they have no control. The county has no control over those industries. So that's why this order to me is confusing because it's not creating a solution. We're dealing in the potentials. We're dealing in the what ifs. What if we have an outbreak? What if because the community spread doesn't change, now it starts to data track back to our schools? It's all dealing in what ifs. Your club sports are going to continue. Things in Wood County are going to continue. Things in the bars and the restaurants and the Walmarts and they're going to all continue, right? The only thing the county is shutting down is the school systems and the athletics associated within the school buildings.
I still worry about the number of kids who are going to be in large groups over Thanksgiving. And bring it back into the schools. And we know it's happening. We know kids are going to Florida. We know they're going here and there. They're gathering in large groups in their homes. You and I may not be doing that, but we know our kids are. And that brings it back to our teachers. Are we going to have enough substitutes for bus drivers, for teachers? And we have to be cognizant of our public also, our families and what they're doing. I, I'm just a little worried about bringing people back right away. I really am.
Hal, can we get back to the questions since I was interrupted? Can you kind of answer my questions?
Well, we're just have a discussion, Jeff. So I understand that. You got to let everybody get it out when they, when they need to. Listen, first of all, the board doesn't make curricular decisions. So the decisions on how we handle the remote were made by our leaders in the buildings, our curriculum director, get it, using the feedback. And conveying that out to the teachers. So, you know, if I tried to communicate every little nuance of everything we did with you guys, heck, I don't even know them all. I don't even pretend to know all the nuances that are going on at all the grade levels and everything. One thing I do know is that we're going to take your feedback tonight and we're going to sit down as a team and, and, and listen to it. And, and see what we can do to, to improve what I see three of you as parents shaking your heads saying are two pretty major problems from your point of view. Now, I do know at the elementary levels, in case through six anyways, there are some, you know. That two-day, that two-day assignment thing isn't the case at the elementaries. It's they, they have until the Sunday night before the following week to complete the assignment. So there's some nuances within the different levels that, that are going to be different. So we're going to, we're going to sit down and, and talk those through. And, and Jeff, I'll be happy to, to give the board, I guess. Some general updates on, on what we can do to, to, to make it. But I don't know how pervasive this problem is or isn't. You know what I mean? I haven't been.
You've heard from three board members that have kids in the district that were pretty adamant on what the issues are. So I think it's pretty fair to take that feedback and try to adjust.
Well, I, I absolutely agree. But, but in terms of like, you know, what we adjusted and what we do. I mean, those are intricate discussions that you have and right, and philosophies come in. And some kids needs pushed, other kids don't. And it's, it's very family unique to the kids. And, and, and we're, we'll continue to, to work. Like I said, I'll get with them on Monday and we'll, we'll work to make the remote learning experience the best it can be. I mean, that's what we're going to try to do, knowing it's unique to every family. You know, and, and how hard it is or how easy it is, is very unique to each family.
I agree. Just like I said, I think the three of us that have kids in the district are kids are very good kids. We're fortunate in that nature. Not all kids are that fortunate. So I can imagine those ones, how they're struggling, those families are struggling if we're having those troubles.
Yep. Fair enough.
So. You emailed us in regards to the testing, our onsite testing, which Mercy is no longer going to do, correct? How are we going to get data from our staff and students? Are they going to have to go to the drive-by locations that are provided throughout the county? So.
Great question. Matter of fact, Sherry and I talked today about the problem we're now having. We're finding out sometimes luckily and through the grapevine of a positive staff member because they're not going, we, we no longer have access to the. From what Sherry tells me, and again, I don't have this directly from Mercy, is that they're no longer doing the mobile testing because they just, they, they can't do it any longer. They can't sustain the program, whether it's not having enough tests or people, or they're just so overwhelmed. So, but what, what they have said is that they're going to do a drive-through testing site that our staff and families can have access to now. I don't, I don't know enough about what could be. I think there's a lot of thoughts about what could be. But now that this, I mean, this thing is growing exponentially every day to a point where no one can keep their head above water. I mean, anywhere in terms of the medical field, I mean, and, and testing and in those types of things. So, so right now, right now, if I want all our staff members, especially if you have, if you're sick, please let Sherry, me, or your supervisor, somebody know. That you're sick. So we can, you know, continue to track you. And then she can help hook you up to where to go to get a test. Or you could go to your primary physician. And then once you know a result, please, please, please let us know. It'll be a little harder to track with kids when we're not in school for sure. In terms of the numbers. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, yeah, you did. I, I was just curious how we were going to track because I know Keith was saying that we don't have numbers. But if all the other districts are having the same situation we are, we're going to have a very difficult time getting numbers if we don't have tests available to our people.
Yeah. Alls I can do is go by people who tell me or tell us right now, because we don't have the control, especially if we're remote, they're not in the schools. For us to, to be contact tracing and then have an accurate record. So.
And I just got a text from someone, I don't even know who it was. And they were saying that the high school, they're all eating for a lunch now. So they do get a half an hour lunch break. So to, Heather, your child's in high school, right? So they do get a half hour lunch scheduled for them, or whether or not they're using it, I don't know.
Correct. They do. But there are times like for his specific like AP class, when he needs further instruction or they use his SAT time. Or he has to check in with them, then he, he forfeits that. And there's been some confusion with that specific class. And then he's like, I'm not, I didn't know I was supposed to be in on my lunch hour on this. And there was a lot of confusion during that time period.
Yeah, it's, it's the same as when they're in school and they stop by to talk to a teacher during their lunch instead of going to lunch, right?
That, that is completely inaccurate. My daughter's lunch, she does get lunch at two o'clock. Tell me how that helps anyone. So I guess just a couple. Just a couple of the questions on how does this affect the special needs, the career tech? And do we have a plan for exams? Or is that something you got to work with Jim on?
Yeah, Jim and I were texting today. We, we have a tentative plan on exams. So you'll be getting noticed this high school with how we're going to handle exams. Moving forward, probably very soon, you know, probably Monday at the absolute latest. Special needs will probably revert back to how we did it in the past with those self-contained programs coming into school like we did in the past. It's permitted in the order. I did text the health director this morning after the order was written. That career tech was not mentioned. I know I personally brought it up in a couple of different meetings that we've had about career tech. So my intention, I guess, to Keith's point about breaking the order, if there's an area I'm going to break the order, it'll probably be allowing our career tech kids to come into their labs. But I do need to just double check with the, the health department and, and ensure, because it's not only us, but it's going to be Sylvania, it's going to be Washington local, any TPS, they all have career tech. Programs that we're going to need those kids to get, get hours towards certifications. So Monday at 11, I have a meeting with Mrs. Kosick, our special needs to just, I guess, review our, our special needs plan. And then we will release when we're going to start that. Need to talk with Mr. Sandwich about transportation, all those types of things. Food services, obviously, we'll continue to provide lunches during this. And we'll have to, you know, talk through what that looks like in a full remote, probably similar to what it is right now. I think there's a couple of schools that we're distributing, right? Mr. Sandwich, we have a couple of schools that we're distributing lunches out of.
Yes, that's correct.
So it won't take us long to, to get back in the swing of it. And we could certainly look, I, I hear you loud and clear, guys, on the, on the, on the curriculum adjustments. And we'll see what we can do to, to, to make it better. So with that, I guess my, my intention, my hope is, is that, you know, we can leave here tonight with, with support for that move. To go K-12 remote. I have a, basically a draft letter to, to go out to our families and staff here shortly. And then we'll, we'll be moving, you know, moving pretty quickly starting Monday.
I want to just share one, one last concern centered around the athletic aspects of this order as well as. We're taking again, what has been an extremely controlled environment, what we have done well. In protecting our student athletes and shutting that down, like with the youth programming. Which is now going to drive them into a private market that is less more controlled and less more protected than we have been internally in our buildings. And obviously everyone that knows me knows that I'm deeply involved with athletics. I coached at the high school level for basketball and I, I run youth programs as well. And that is my fear again with this, that. And that is my fear again with this, that nothing else is shutting around us and we're taking away this controlled environment that we've done a great job with protecting these kids and now forcing them to go outside um, to these less protected environments like tournaments locally or other facilities where they're gonna have to, you know, they go find practice space, because we're not allowing them into our buildings anymore. Based on following the order. So, I, you know, to me, we're creating more issues, um, as opposed to creating solutions. I just wanted to leave that. And again, you know, the hybrid model is an option. And I'll, thoughts with that is still an option for our district. We've proven that we can do it safely. Even in the hardest of times. So, thank you.
I would like to say, you know, sometimes we have to rely on our parents to take care of their kids and see to their needs and make sure where they are and what they're doing. We can't do it all. Sometimes we have to rely on our parents to do it, do their parenting. If they want their kids in tournaments and stuff, we can't do anything about that. That's up to the parents to do. It's my opinion.
Yeah, and there's, there's a, there's a distinct difference between, uh, you know, clay and facet sponsored athletic teams and just, you know, others out there. So in terms of the clay and facet athletic teams, we're gonna have to follow the order. Um, and so, you know, that's gonna be what I'm going to, uh, talk with our ADs about and our coaches. So I don't want anyone to leave this meeting thinking that.
We don't, we don't have to follow the order. There's legal precedents in Lake County and Cuyahoga County.
Neither one of us are attorneys or lawyers and, and, uh.
They tried, Lake County and Cuyahoga County tried to shut down the school gyms and they were both ruled unconstitutional. Both cases.
I understand. As superintendent right now, I believe we should follow the order. And you and I've talked about that. So, okay, well, Mrs. Molnar, I, that's, that's the discussion. So if, I, I guess I'm gonna move forward with that, that plan, uh, with, for the district. Uh, I did check with our attorney today. It is not something be, that we have to do a vote on by the Board of Education. Because we have a standing remote learning plan with the state of Ohio, which gives us flexibility that flows, you know, as we flow through the three different types. So I guess if, if, if that ends the discussion, we'll, we'll move forward with the plan and, and adjust accordingly as we need to.
Okay, further discussion. Anyone going once, twice? That's it. Um, Mr. Gregory, go ahead with your plan. And is there any need for an executive session this evening from anyone? Okay, next meeting is Tuesday, December fifteenth. Uh, it will again be remote accord, uh, the state has gone forward with remote meetings until July first, so we will continue with that as long as the, as long as we see that we need to be in remote. I need a motion to close the meeting, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes, and thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. I appreciate everyone's input.
Everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.